It's Tuesday, October the 19th, 2021. And it's just a little bit after the 7:00 PM hour. This is our evening meeting for the month of October. We're already in October, Commissioner.
It's almost over.
Yes, yes, this year is moving right along. We're calling this meeting to order this evening. And we will start off, I believe, Executive Director Reynolds with special recognition from the Atlanta Regional Commission. They have a presentation for us tonight. Our friends from ARC is here. Ms. Malika Wilkins and Rob Laboue. Jim is, I saw Jim Suckler.
He went to the reverse.
Okay, all right. Well, at this time, come on up and.
Do you mind if I take mine?
Yes, absolutely.
I didn't want to be out of order here. Hello, well, thank you all, first of all, for having us here again. Chair Nesbit, Commissioner Washington staff, thank you all so much. We're really excited to get out into the region and come see this beautiful building you have here and all the work you have going on here. But I'm Malika Reed Wilkins. I'm the Senior Director for the Center for Strategic Relations at ARC. Every year, we produce what we call internally a return on investment report, but externally it's an annual report. It's like a high level report that we share per county with those of you who are part of the ARC fold. And so just going to talk a little bit about that today, and then I'll hand it over to my colleague, Rob Laboue, who will do a deeper dive into the workforce piece, as I know you all want to hear more about that. Next slide, please. So as you can see, okay, you can see, as you can see, we are now an 11-county regional commission. As of July 1, we added Forsyth County. We're very excited to have Forsyth in the fold, and it was their decision, and we're excited to have them in. And as you can also see, you might can't read all the bubbles on that wheel, but we have several legal designations. We are the North Metropolitan Water District, where the urban area security initiative, affectionately known as Homeland Security. We are WorkSource Georgia. We are also, you know, Regional Commission, the Metropolitan Planning Organization for 20 counties, and the list goes on. I won't go through all of those, but as you can see, we do a lot in the Atlanta Regional Commission, and there is no other commission like ours in the country. So we're a little diverse in terms of our portfolio, as opposed to some of the other regional commissions across the country. Next slide. So this is also just a snapshot of the various programs and projects and brands that we cover in ARC. Some may look familiar to you. My department particularly sort of manages the messaging and branding for all of these items, but just to let you know, we stay busy on your behalf. Next slide. And just to give you a little background, if you don't know, we have a 41-member board. Again, that used to be 39 as of, but July 1, it became 41 because we added the Mayor of Coming, as well as Chairwoman Cindy Jones Mills of Forsyth County. So we have 41 total, and I won't read all those to you, but you can see how we're, our board and our governance is made up. Next slide. And great pictures here, looking at person in front of me here, and also Chair Nesbit, Mayor Evans, and as well as our Citizen-at-Large member, Alicia Sanders, who also represents all of Rockdale, who serve on the ARC board. Next slide. So getting into sort of the nuts and bolts of the annual report or the annual return on investment report, we pulled out some specific data points just for Rockdale to get that information to you. And Jim also has a copy, a hard copy, and we have a link on the website, so we can send that as well for anyone. They're public knowledge, anyone can access that. But all of the work that we do is centered around our Atlanta region's plan, and it's around world-class infrastructure, healthy, livable communities, and a competitive economy. So we'll be, I'll be talking about the work that we do with you all in those three buckets. Next slide. So here's one that we're extremely proud of. In February of 2020, ARC approved $173 billion for the Transportation Improvement Plan, or the Atlanta Region's Plan, for the entire region. Rockdale, as of last year, actually received, was allocated $114 million to that. So really helping improve mobility across Rockdale and to your neighboring counties as well. Some of you may or may not know, but ARC also manages Georgia Commute Options on behalf of the Georgia DOT, and so we've been managing that program for about four or five years now. And with Rockdale residents participating, we have 475,000 fewer miles traveled on the roads. So what Georgia Commute Options does is encourages people to not ride by themselves and leverage, you know, carpooling, walking, biking, teleworking, those types of things, to have those vehicles miles less traveled and to help our roadways as well. And then I always like this interesting stat about toilet rebates. I know everybody's like, why was the toilet rebate up there? But it really is about securing our sustainable future. We have a toilet rebate program where residents, when they upgrade their outdated toilets, they could actually get a rebate of $75 towards their bill. And so we have 56 residents as of last year, that doesn't account some of the ones that have happened in the recent months, that have taken advantage of that. So that's over $4,000 worth of rebates that residents here in Rockdale have received. Next slide.
Well, for accounting like Rockdale, that's a big deal.
Yes.
I know it may be kind of awkward talk, conversation to talk about toilet rebates, but in a county of.
Hey, we got our toilet rebates when we bought two new toilets.
Absolutely.
I don't know that it was this program, but we got some.
Oh, awesome, well, yes.
I thought I'd say that because I heard the way you were approaching it.
Yes, sir, it's always awkward.
We appreciate rebates in Rockdale County.
Okay, of any kind.
Of any kind, absolutely.
Oh, well, glad to hear that. And then as we go into healthy, livable communities, you know, and you'll see later in the slides, some of the demographics here, but over $672,000 was allocated to Rockdale for your senior services, direct services for seniors, for seniors here in Rockdale. So we're really excited about that as well, and you have such a great senior program here in Rockdale. Next slide. And so here's some, talking about our economy and just a by-the-numbers piece here. So as you can see, median household is just over 60,000, and from 2010 to 2021, you've added over 3,000 or nearly 3,000 jobs here. So the growth in that, in that piece is definitely apparent here. And the poverty rate has kind of stayed steady, maybe .5, give or take, but it stayed steady compared to the region. And so those are some of the economic numbers. Next slide. Also, and my colleague, Rob, will go into detail about the WorkSource solutions. Here are just some numbers. Over 200 of your residents have participated, whether they're the youth or, you know, adults in our Career Resource Center or our Next Gen program, which is great. And I know Rob will go into detail that, so I don't want to still take his thunder there, but it's a great program, and you know, we have a actual facility here, right here in Rockdale.
Malika, if you don't mind, I'd like for you to go back to the previous slide.
Yes, sir, please go back, yes.
The reason I wanted to go back to that slide, Commissioner, is because the numbers that ARC use and the data information they use are really true pictures of what's really happening here in Rockdale County. The other reason I wanted to point out this is because this board, we spent a lot of time this year talking about economic development. In fact, Commissioner Washington champions that cause on our behalf in the area of economic development. And we're constantly explaining and teaching our citizenry about the importance of rooftops, which will equate to other businesses in the county. These numbers right here, and that's just a little fragment of the true picture, but these numbers weigh a very important part in terms of economic development and growth in our county, and understanding all of those different dynamics in those numbers. So I just wanted to go back to that because all of us, even over the mayor's office, they get questions all the time about, when are we going to get this in Rockdale? When is this going to happen? What kind of restaurant can you bring here? But it's impacted by the education base, the tax base, the number of rooftops of residents, all add up and equal. Commissioner?
Can you, where, I was about to say state your authority, that's, where did you get the numbers? Where, because those are different numbers than what I.
Yeah, so these numbers are right from, typically from the census. This is 2019, and then we have our own in-house research and analytics team that have several resources that they pull these numbers together. So some of the, these are, the numbers that I'll show in the next slides will also be from the census. These are just from a plethora of sources. We are the affiliate for data and research in terms of demographics for the region with the official entity, but I can find out exactly, to your point, Commissioner Washington, I can definitely get those exact sources for you, so you can have that.
Thank you. So I think it's also important to note that the median household income is significantly lower in Rockdale than it is in the region, in the Atlanta region, which is another reason why some of those restaurants and stores that people would like to have aren't, aren't ready to come here yet.
But we will def, we will definitely get that for you, the follow-up, for the, for the exact sources on there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for going back to that because, to the point, Commissioner Lee, which just pointed out about basically the feasibility studies that any company will do before they come and set up shopping. They want to make sure that they're going to be sustainable in the community. It's one thing to have a nice ribbon cutting and a grand opening with a bunch of people, but six months, nine months later, after the grand opening, who's still coming to buy hot dogs from your hot dog shop? And you have enough people that are doing that and supporting you. Is it worthy of you making that sizable investment into a community? And to the point Commissioner made about the median household income, she's absolutely right, but I really believe through the trends we've seen over the last 36 months, we're improving. We're making major strides and improvement. More young professionals are considering Rockdale.
Yes.
A lot of retired professionals are coming into Rockdale and set up shops. So things are, we're making some strides. We've still got some ways to go, but we're certainly a player among the Atlanta region. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, no, excellent points, excellent points. Next slide. Oh, I think I was past that one. Next slide. And so in looking at this, now, these are directly pulled from the census of this year. Might I add, I got to give ARC just a tad bit of a plug, we were extremely close to the census numbers this year in our estimates, in our population estimates. Part of our job as in a regional commission, we actually give out the population estimates every year. So every August or September, we're the official entity for the region that actually shares out those numbers for each county and the region. So we were extremely, very, very close this year to the point where we didn't even really need to adjust anything. So as you can see, over the last two decades, Rockdale has grown.
Yes.
In population, even from, from, from the last 10 years as well. But you also see in, in your demographics that it's changing. And that's something we're seeing across the region, though. We're seeing that across the region. We're seeing in Forsyth County, over the last 10 years, the Asian population has increased by 30%. So, you know, I would, you know, as you can see here, and I won't read all the numbers to you, but there's a shift here as well in terms of the Black community as well, Hispanic community moving to Rockdale County. But I also want to point out to your point, Chairman, that over the last 10 years or so, more people who are 65 or older are coming to Rockdale, even more so than the region. They're finding it a place that they want to retire.
We're the best county in the state of Georgia. Let me just go ahead and set the record straight, hate to interrupt your presentation like that, but I'm just, when you go back westbound on 20, you just let everybody know, you just left the best county in the state of Georgia. We can return to regular.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. So as you can see, you have definitely had growth in that, in that demographic. Next slide. And this is my last slide before I hand it over to my colleague, but we, every year we conduct what you call the Metro Atlanta Speak survey. And so you'll see the new 2021 results at the State of the Region event. I don't know if you all know about that, but it's on November 16 at the Georgia Work Congress Center, and that's where we release the most current results from 2021. But I wanted to share 2020s with you, just a few snippets from that. So in terms of the respondents from Rockdale, nineteen, a total of about 40% together, but 19.8% believe that crime was the biggest issue facing our region. And those are from Rockdale residents who are responding to this survey, their perception of what are the biggest issues. And then the second one was public health. So these are perceptions that actual Rockdale residents have about the region as a whole as to what are the biggest issues. The other thing is, and don't be alarmed, because as you can see, it's not that much different from the region. 67% of Rockdale residents, due to the pandemic, I'm sure by and large, either lost their job, were furloughed, lost job hours, et cetera. But that's a trend throughout the entire region. Now, we're hoping this on the uptick now with the vaccine and different things that are into play, but just so you know, that was a trend across the region that we saw. One of the best data points that I feel really good about and get excited about is this last one. A third of your residents believe that things will get better, and they're optimistic. And about three, they believe things are on the up. I mean, I don't know if that means, because it was so low, the only place you could go is up, but across all the counties, by and large, in this survey, people really felt optimistic about the future, and that's really what you want at the end of the day. We were weathering the storm, and so this just tells us that you have people in your community that do believe that things are getting better or will get better. So I will conclude my part of the presentation and hand it over. I don't know if you all had any more questions, but I'll hand it over to.
Commissioner, is there any questions for Malika? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Rob, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
I'm good.
Chairman, Commissioners, nice to see you. Thanks for having me, and give me a few minutes of your time. I think there's going to be a presentation that pops up here in a second. Well, it's getting up. I'm Rob Laboue. I am the manager of the Workforce Solutions Group at the Atlanta Regional Commission, and in that role, I also serve as the Director of the Atlanta Regional Workforce Development Board. The slide you see up here, so the branding that we use throughout the state of Georgia for all of the workforce boards is WorkSource Georgia. So you'll see that coloring, that logo. So anywhere you see WorkSource Georgia, you know it's one of the local workforce boards, and you see above that it says Atlanta Regional. So we are one of 19 local workforce boards, and that's the common branding. Next slide. Malika talked basically about this, but what I wanted to point out, so the Atlanta Regional Commission has several authorities and responsibilities. On the left-hand side, you see, those are all the roles that we have that report directly to the Atlanta Regional Commission. On the right-hand side, you see that there are three other functions that come under the Atlanta Regional Commission, but actually have separate boards. So what's interesting is, is when we talk about workforce, the staff work under the Atlanta Regional Commission, but the work that we do is directed by the Atlanta Regional, by the Atlanta Regional Workforce Development Board, which is in the middle. So we have kind of two different boards that we're working under as we develop our programs and policies for workforce. Next slide, please. So we talk about workforce, pretty simple. It is an interconnected set of solutions to meet local employment needs. Next slide. And the way that we deliver these services is under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. So there's a federal law which was approved back in 2014 that established the current workforce law, known as WIOA, and you can see what the three pillars are there. But in essence, WIOA is set up to be an integrated, job-driven workforce system that links diverse, talented workforce to the nation's businesses and improves quality of life. This is a transition from the previous law. So workforce development has been around since the Depression. 1932 is when it was established. The training component came out of the 60s. What changed in the 2014 law is it says, we're not just training people because they're interested in a certain type of training. We're training people based on the needs of the local employers. So if somebody comes in and says they want to be, you know, you know, job X, but there's no demand for that job, we will not put them in training for that job, because we are training people because there is a job that's available in that community, and it sets them up for a career pathway. Next slide, please. So I mentioned in the state of Georgia, on the left-hand side, you can see that there are 19 independent local workforce boards, and this is set out by, by federal law that you, how a local workforce board is established. But then the state can identify what those areas are. So based on the federal criteria, the state has created 19 local workforce boards. On the right-hand side, you see, and I'm sorry, I'm still using the old map. This is a 10-county map. We got to, we got to add Forsyth County up there. In the 11-county map, there are actually now going to be six different workforce boards. So it gets very complicated in metro Atlanta. You have an independent workforce board for the city of Atlanta, Cobb County, Fulton County, and DeKalb County. Atlanta Regional, the board that I manage, covers the seven outer counties you see in blue. And so that is known as WorkSource Atlanta Regional, and it comes under the direction of the Atlanta Regional Workforce Development Board, which is a 21-member board comprised of, again, under federal law, at least 51% must be private sector businesses, and then the others are comprised of nonprofits and things like development authorities and college systems and so forth. Next slide, please. So the way we deliver services, we have two primary customers, job seekers and employers. So we have the, the local workforce development board, which is, as I said, Atlanta Regional Workforce Development Board. In yellow, you see our two customers, job seekers and employers. The way that breaks down, again, federal law says you have three different types of customers. You have adults and dislocated workers, so basically if you're over 18 and you're unemployed or you're underemployed, you come under that bucket. Youth, which is ages 16 to 24, and typically you, you focus on out-of-school youth or in-school youth. We focus on out-of-school youth. So basically, if you have somebody who's not currently enrolled in any type of school, a lot of times they have a GED but have not gone on, or they've dropped out, we can work with them under our youth program. And then we have business services, and these are the services that we work directly with employers. Next slide, please. So the way that we deliver the services for our adult and dislocated workers is by a series of Career Resource Centers. We have one, what's called a one-stop center. That's our largest center in Gwinnett County. But then we have seven affiliate sites, so we have at least one site in every county, and we have a site here in Rockdale County, and we're very pleased that it is located at 1400 Parker Road. And I'll talk about a little more specifically on that in a second. So we have eight Career Resource Centers. We have eight youth providers, and these are typically run by nonprofits in the, in the local area that they run our youth programs. And then we have two mobile units. One is a full-size, basically RV with 15 computer workstations, so it's a mobile career lab. The other is a tractor trailer that has eight fully functional welding stations, so we can do mobile welding training at different locations. The welding lab was delivered December 2020, which was right in the middle of COVID. We've not yet put it in use because of COVID issues, but we do plan on hopefully rolling it out in January. Next slide.
We got a place for it in Rockdale when y'all decide to roll it out. We got a big parking lot to put it in.
Absolutely, well, we would love to, we would love to talk to you about that and schedule something.
We'll debut it for you, Rob.
That'd be wonderful. So in Rockdale County, as I said, we have the one affiliate site, which is 1400 Parker Road. We've actually been in that location for quite some time. Of course, with the renovations that happened, we moved out, we moved down the road, down Parker Road to, it's a corner market, I believe, was Choppings Center. We were there for about two years. They completed the renovations at, at, Storehouse Ministries completed the renovations. They look fantastic. And so we actually had an open house in early July. We brought out our mobile unit, which is what you see in the background there. We are on the side that is facing the tennis courts. We have our own entrance, it used to be the loading bays. The downside was, we ordered furniture. It was designed, it was constructed, and it wasn't ready, and then it was sitting in a warehouse for the last month because it couldn't get delivered. There was no delivery driver. It is set to be delivered on Thursday, this week, so it's coming. So we will be able to reopen that site and actually have people come in, because we'll have all our furniture set up, hopefully next week. Again, it's getting delivered on Thursday, and that hopefully should, will go smoothly. And so at that site, we have a contractor who runs our career services, under, under the oversight of our staff. The group is called EQIS. It used to be called ResCare Workforce Services. At that site, we also run a youth program, run by a group called Project Outsource Connects. But that site has been designed so it can hold both the adult program and the youth program with a large computer lab and a multi, multi-use space, several offices. So we're really looking forward to getting that up and running. I mentioned the mobile unit. That goes around to different sites every day. In Rockdale County, it typically goes to the Nancy Gwynne Library twice a month, but it doesn't have to go there. If you have a special event, we can move it to that site. If you want us to try out another location, we can move it. We just typically need about two months' notice, because we put out a calendar of events, put it on our website, and post it, and that's where people know where to find it. Again, we started using it in July. COVID increased, we stopped using it, so we'll probably be rolling that out in December or January, but it will start being used on a regular basis. It is available for special events, like I said, on Fridays and Saturdays. It is scheduled every Monday through Thursday throughout the region. But if you have an interest in, in using that, please let us know. We'll be glad to work with you on that. Next slide, please. So how many customers are we serving? The first grouping up here you see are region-wide, so seven counties in our service area. Customer visits, that's people walking in the door. The number dropped off. If you look, from 2016 to 2019, the number kept going down. Well, 2016 to 2018 are the real numbers, and that's because, if you go back a few more years, you actually see that we were up at, at like 40,000 before that. That's because the unemployment rate went from 9% to 3.5%. We weren't having as many people come in.
Right.
COVID hit 2018 and 2019, or 2019, 2020, that's why those numbers are down, and those numbers reflect phone calls and emails, because we went to fully virtual. That's why those numbers are lower, but we were still serving people in a virtual environment. Adults enroll, that's the number of people who actually fully enrolled in our programs. And when I say fully enrolled in our programs, one of the biggest benefits we have is we have money set aside to put people in training. We can spend up to $7,000 for a one-year training program, or $10,000 for a two-year training program. They can be as short as four weeks, as long as two, as two years. And it gets them an industry-recognized credential in an in-demand field in a job that's currently available in the region.
So what's the criteria for someone to participate?
It varies, but for the most part, if you're, if you're not working, you qualify. If you are working, there's a income criteria. You have to be, you have to be underemployed, and there's an income criteria. But if you're not working, if you're unemployed, for the most part, you're going to qualify. And then in Rockdale County, you see the number of visits we had, usually around 2,000, and then the number of people enrolled, upper hundreds, and then the number of youth enrolled, fully enrolled in our programs, averaged somewhere between 40 and, around 40 or so. A big jump in 2019, it looks like. 2019, it looks like, we did some virtual training, and I'm guessing that's where that number, number came from. So we are seeing Rockdale residents. We could use more. We would love to have more residents coming in the facilities and enrolling in programs. We have the capacity to serve them, and we have a great facility to serve them at, so we'd like to get more information out. And then the work-based learning, that's the bottom number, that's the services we have with employers. So we offer a couple of different services. We can help them do recruitment, we can help them with a job fair, but we also have money specifically for on-the-job training. So if, if we can work with them on a qualified customer, we can pay for 50% of their salary, up to $12,000, up to about six, or six months, depending on how that goes. So if they hire somebody that has come through our program, we will pay for half their salary for up to six months. We also do what's called incumbent worker training. So say you have a manufacturer, they have a new piece of equipment, they need to train their existing staff on that equipment. We can pay for that, up to half of that training cost. So we don't pay for the salary, but we would work with, say, a technical college and pay for half of that training cost for the college to come in and do the training for their existing staff, with the caveat that those people who go through the training will get a raise of some sort. We don't say what, how much, we just say they will get an increase in salary.
So do you work closely with the technical college system?
We do. We work very closely with the, the technical college system, and we work closely with the Chamber of Commerce and the Development Authorities, but yes, we have some great partnerships locally that we work with on that. Next slide, please. I mentioned on funding, the very top line, so the national workforce funding, $3 billion from 2017 to 2021. You see that it has gone up maybe 2%, a little bit. There is a funding formula that is set out in the federal law. Basically, it, it is a disadvantage for states and communities that have a stronger economy. So the state of Georgia has had a stronger economy over the past few years. So you can see that the numbers, even though the federal dollars remained even or went up a little bit, the numbers coming to the state. up a little bit, the numbers coming to the state for workforce development were going down. You can see that in the pink highlights. And then ARWDB, that's us, the Atlanta Regional Workforce Development Board, you see that we were at about $12 million in 2017. We were down to $8 million in 2021. Again, it has to do with the formula distribution because our region was doing well economically compared to others. We were getting less and less money. So I say that because there are some opportunities for new funding come about. We did apply for both of those grants, the Build Back Better Grant, and we are in the process of applying for the Good Job Grant, which is due in January. But there's also two potential funding sources being discussed at the federal level. Infrastructure funding, the Infrastructure Act, which is a, you know, a large funding source. In the infrastructure construction component, there's a billion dollars for occupational-specific training to actually train people so they can actually build that infrastructure that will come out of that act. And the second one is with the Reconciliation Plan that went through the House Committee and is being marked up. There was $80 billion for workforce development training over a ten-year period. Those are significant investments in workforce development. And what's important about that is all through the COVID, there was a lot of money coming out for services. Really nothing coming out for workforce training. This would be significant assistance for workforce training. So if you have any ends with federal legislators, we support both of those. The Infrastructure Act and the Reconciliation Act from the standpoint of, there's a lot of commitment to federal, to workforce training. And so if we can keep workforce training dollars top of mind, we would love to see that come down to the local workforce board. Next slide, please. Lastly, I mentioned about targeted outreach. We're limited on the amount of marketing we can do with our federal dollars. We can do some targeted outreach, and we've been doing that over the last couple of years among the five local workforce boards in metro Atlanta. We've been working together on targeted outreach through social media outreach. We put them up on some transit, on the buses and on some MARTA stations. We had a few billboards around. We've done grassroots, which basically is printing out flyers, and we hired this company that actually walks to communities and puts them on, they go to the barber shop, they go to the laundromat, they go to the church, and they hand them out. And then we have some videos, some testimonials and some animations. We've gotten, so for example, last digital media campaign that just ended, well, actually this is the last week, for the first five weeks of the six-week run, we had over a million impressions. So that means that that ad popped up on somebody's social media page over a million times. We had almost 10,000 people clicked on that ad and said, "We want to find out more information." That ad brings them to ATLworks.org. That is a central customer page for all five workforce boards in metro Atlanta. And on there, there's a page where you can sign up to get more information. And we had, so we had 441 people actually sign up and say, "I want more information about what I've seen so far." With all of that, the outreach material that we have is on this card, which I, which is at your desk. This is actually a travel drive. It pops open, and you can find all the outreach material. There's things you can print out, like flyers. There's videos and testimonials if you want to put them on the, yep, just pops up. Press on this button right here on the top. It's a little hard. When I first saw them, I thought they were luggage tags, but they're actually travel And you can actually pop, you can actually pop that whole thing off if you want to put it in a travel drive if it doesn't fit. The whole thing comes off just like that. And then it pops back on. So there are some videos on here, and we're going to show, there's a ninety-second video that we're going to show next. We would love for you to help spread the word on this and put it on your, you know, local access channel or other ways. But we want to get the word out that we're open, we're available, we have services, we have dollars, and we would love to work with your businesses and your job seekers in your community. And I'll end, if I can ask, to go to the next slide, which is a ninety-second video, which kind of provides a quick highlight of the services we offer.
Your dream job is calling. We're here to help you find it. Finding the right job or career can be difficult and stressful. WorkSource is here to make it easy. Our personalized step-by-step process provides job seekers like you with the support and resources needed to get a great job. Our career resource centers offer all the equipment you need for things like printing and sharing resumes and cover letters, as well as quiet places to make those important calls. You'll participate in job readiness workshops where you'll learn how to market yourself. An advisor will help guide you to find the right career move, and you'll have support from the entire WorkSource team throughout the whole process. Let's say you're looking for a career as a medical technician. You may need money for training, supplies, and assistance for childcare and transportation. WorkSource is here to help. Or you may want to become a driver. You'll need to learn to drive a big rig and get your commercial driver's license. Georgia has many occupations that need great workers, and WorkSource's dedicated career counselors can help you find the one that's right for you. The bottom line is that our first priority is your success. WorkSource was designed to assess your skills, help with training, and find a job that fits you, all at no cost to you. WorkSource is a federally funded program. WorkSource, the help you need to get the job you want.
So Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the time. We would love to have you come over to the center and look at it once the, our furniture's in, and I'd be glad to come out and talk to you at another time or work with any of your staff on how we can promote this more and get some, get some customers in the door.
Commissioners, any questions for Rob, if White leaves the podium?
Do you have any current programs in place with the Rockdale County Development Authority, or are Congress Rockdale Economic Development Council?
We do work with them closely on our business services staff. We have one person who is assigned to work with Rockdale County on a regular basis, and she does connect with Marty and...
Gina. Marty's no longer there. We have a new gentleman that, I guess he'll introduce himself to you, but Kevin Hannah.
Yes.
Is the new person.
Yes.
Have you met him yet, Rob?
I have, yeah.
Okay, very good.
And we do, we do work with them on a regular basis, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
So I'm really excited that you're back at Restoration Storehouse, and some of our recovery community is going to be locating there, too, and those will be folks who are, who may be coming out of jail or prison, who maybe not, but they've had maybe substance use issues or something. So do you work specifically with that community?
We do, and particularly returning citizens and those that have some type of a substance abuse history are targeted populations that we do work with. We're encouraged to work with them from the federal level, and we certainly do work with them and are glad to work with them. I also know that we met some, I guess you're running a Head Start program there already?
Yes.
We'd love to work with, you know, the collaboration between the different populations that will be there really are important. You know, if somebody's dropping off a kid at Head Start, we would love to talk to them if they need some, some workforce training. There's really some, some good synergy that's going to happen out of that location.
So are you, you said you were located on that side nearest the tennis courts?
Yes, exactly.
That's the entrance to Head Start also on that side. So are you near there?
So we are, the first set of stairs on the right-hand side, if you're back to the tennis court, that's our door, and that walks right into our facility.
Oh, okay.
And we do have a small sign up there, a temporary sign. We're going to get a permanent sign that's scheduled to get put up.
It's going to be very, very nice to have all of that centralized.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Rob, thank you, and Malik and Jim, for you all coming out. Rockdale is a player in the region. We are part of the eleven counties that make up the Atlanta Region Commission. Commissioner Washington, as I stated earlier, is working very closely with our Economic Development Council, particularly Mr. Kevin Hannah. Rob, I'd like to make sure of you, before you leave, if you make sure you leave the Commissioner with a business card. It's important that your agency is really connected with Kevin Hannah and the efforts that he's making here in Rockdale County as relate to workforce development and economic development as a whole. This is a huge start, and I think what we'll do, Commissioners moving forward, perhaps on a quarterly basis or by annual basis, twice a year at least, to have you all come in and give us some updates, because we're optimistic, just like our citizens, that the numbers are improving and moving in the direction that we need them to move in. But making the connection with Commissioner Washington so that, that full circle can come with what you're doing, the efforts of ARC and WorkSource Georgia, along with the Economic Development Council, Mr. Kevin Hannah.
Right.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I had one more thought, too, because Piedmont Technical College also has a mobile welding unit that's over at the Career Academy. So I was just, as you were talking about it, I was just thinking, you know, then, maybe you're already doing this, some coordination with them so that you're on different days or different times or different locations.
Yeah, we will. I know that the state, the technical college system in Georgia has several that they use throughout a lot of their colleges, and we will definitely be coordinating once we start putting ours in rotation.
Rob, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. Commissioners, the presentation from ARC tonight, this evening reminds us that the opportunities are there. They are available for those who are interested. There are tons of resources in addition to all of the now hiring signs that are everywhere. There are training, there's funding, there's resources to help people get acclimated back into the workforce. Certainly do appreciate the relationship that we've had with ARC and that we continue to have. Moving forward now, it's time for our agenda review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to remind everybody, next Tuesday is our Pink Out. We will all be wearing our pink next Tuesday, October 26, at 10:00 AM in this very room. So we can make sure we wear our shirts and wear pink to represent breast cancer awareness.
Very good.
So the first item we have is item 534, and that's with Georgia Statewide After School Network, GSAN. This is through the District Attorney's Office for Building Opportunities in Out-of-School Time, the Boost Grant. It's $9,800. The term is October 1, 2021, through November, through September 30, 2024. And if it's all right, I'll just keep reading until you interrupt.
Okay.
Okay, item 535 is with the U.S. Department of Justice, the Office on Violence Against Women. This is through the Superior Court for Family Court and Compliance Implementation Initiative Grant in the amount of $500,000. The term is October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2025. Item 536 is with ACCG through the Local Government Risk Management Services for the EMA Department. This is for the 2021 Employee Safety Grant in the amount of $9,980. It's a single-year grant award, and it's submitted for ratification. Item 536 is with the Georgia Department of Human Services through the Division of Family and Children's Services for Juvenile Court. This is the ReShape Grant to provide abstinence education, safe dating education, tutoring and life skills for the juvenile court youth in the amount of $100,000. The term is October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022, and it's submitted for ratification. Item 538 is the Governor's Office of Highway Safety through the Sheriff's Office. This is Highway Enforcement, Aggressive Traffic, the HEAT Unit. It's a grant in the amount of $132,824. The term is October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022, and it's submitted for ratification. Item 539 is with ER Snell Contractor Incorporated through the Transportation Department. This is for the Sigmund Road Phase Two GDOT, and it's for the Change Order Number One to Contract 2021-35. It's for additional services not included in the original contract. It's an additional $17,920, and it's SPOS-funded. Item 540 is with Automated Integration LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is the SCADA Support Professional in the amount of $74,800 a year. It's for one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods. Item 541 is with All South Constructors Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for the construction of the Backflow Prevention Device Installation at the Gwinnett County Interconnects. This is Change Order Number One to Contract 2021-53. It's to extend the term due to delays in procuring materials, and it's to extend it through November 30, 2021. Item 542 is with CSX Transportation Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for a Facility Encroachment Agreement for the Almond Branch Sewer Upsizing in the amount of $11,400, and it's for five years. Item 543 is with CSX Transportation Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for a Facility Encroachment Agreement for the Almond Sewer Branch Upsizing with another permit in the amount of $11,400. It's also for five years. Item 544 is with DeKalb County, and it's to rescind Contract 2021-11 with the Water Resources Department. It was an intergovernmental agreement to provide sewer services to the Honey Creek Drainage Basin. It was for 10 years. And item 545 is with DeKalb County for the Water Resources Department. It's an intergovernmental agreement to provide sewered services to the Honey Creek Drainage Basin and is for 10 years, replacing the Contract 2021-111. Item 546 is with Parsons Environment and Infrastructure Group through the Water Resources Department. This is the Engineering Design Services for Snapping Shoals Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's Change Order Number Five to Contract 2016-90. It's to provide additional project management and post-design services in the additional amount of $113,232. Item 547 is with Granite Inliner LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is the Annual Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Services in the amount of $2,120,412. It's an estimated one-year cost with one, three-year additional one-year options. Item 548 is with Pratt Recycling Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for solid waste disposal in the amount of $139 per haul and $53.50 per ton. It's a one-year with option to renew four one-year periods. Item 549 is with Green Dream International LLC through the Stormwater Management Department. This is the unit price aggregates on as-needed basis in the amount of $55,448. It's a one-year with three additional one-year options to renew. Item 550 is with InterDev LLC through the Technology Services Department. This is for GIS Solutions Analysis for Implementation of the ARC GIS Enterprise Deployment in the amount of $9,600, and it's a single event. Item 551 is the list of requests for alcoholic beverage licenses. Item 552 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Woolpert for Flow Monitoring in the amount of $58,155. Item 553 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Lyman Davidson Dually Incorporated for Architectural and Engineering for Fire Station Number 10 in the amount of $65,700, and it's SPOS-funded. Item 554 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Strategic Datacom Incorporated. This is for network and fiber installation in the amount of $30,802.58, and this is host-funded. Item 555 is a requisition through the General Services Department for United Maintenance is to replace 10 HAVC units for the courthouse in the amount of $101,149, and these are ARPA funds. Item 556 is a requisition for the Clerk of Court's Office for juror fees for 2021 in the amount of $30,000. Item 557 is a requisition through the Stormwater Department for Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction Incorporated. This is for asphalt paving mix in the amount of $15,262.6. Item 558 is a requisition through the Technology Services Department. This is for Southern Computer Warehouse for Dell Computers in the amount of $19,729.82. Item 560 is an expenditure request for the COT Systems Incorporated through the Clerk of Superior Court's Office for the OIB Project. This is for deeds in the amount of $24,795. Item 561 is a future land use case, number 2021-04, in ordinance to amend the future land use category for Zero Salem Road Southeast from Mixed Use Employment Center to Me... land use category for Zero Salem Road Southeast from mixed-use employment center to medium-density residential to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading. Item 562 is rezoning case number 2021-06, in ordinance to rezone Zero Salem Road Southeast from N C M X D C I D to the M R U to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading. Item 563 is with Viewpoint Health through the Superior Court. This is for Behavioral Health Services for the Courts. It's RFP 21-19. It's unit pricing. It ends September 30th, 2022. Item 563 is with Southeastern Psychological Associates, Incorporated, through the Superior Court. This is for Behavioral Health Services for the Court. It's RFP 21-19. It's unit price and it ends September 30th, 2022. Sorry about that. Thank you. Two more items. Item 565 is a requisition through the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue Department. This is for Premier Fitness Source. This is for the fitness equipment in the amount of $35,580.50 and it's host-funded. Item 566 is a requisition through the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue Department. This is for Fire Lines, Incorporated. Replacement of the fire hose in the amount of $37,649 and it's host-funded.
Thank you, Executive Director Rutledge. Commissioners, I do want to draw your attention back to item number 2021-555, item 2021-555. This was the $100,000 of ARPA funds that we committed toward the replacement of the 10 H-VET units over at the courthouse. As we continue to move forward, anything of significance that we're contributing or committing to the improvement, replacement, repair of anything regarding the courthouse, I'm going to highlight it because we're keeping a running number as we're working towards expanding the courthouse and creating a brand-new government complex. Every time we spend and allocate funds to patchwork that courthouse, the original structure built in 1939, as this county is trying to move forward with a new government complex, each time we submit funds, because they got to have AC unit over there. They can't operate in a sweatbox or, or turn it into a cooler during the winter. They have to have the proper air ventilation and whatnot. But paying attention to the dollars that we continue to place into a structure that old. We're, we're going to be talking more about the direction of the government complex in 2022 as we're making preparations now to look at all the options that's going to be in the best interest of Rockdale County. But I wanted to point that out because it's like that old 1998 Maxima that I have in my driveway. The car, Tommy, is only about a $500 car, but the people at the Nissan place say it's going to cost $3,500 to get her back on the road again. She's not worth it. So we have to make practical common sense about spending taxpayers' dollars. And at some point, how do we move forward without continuing to spend $100,000 here, $100,000 there with patchwork? Just wanted to point that out.
Well, that was my exact thought as she was reading that one is, oh my, here's another little piece that's going to the courthouse.
Right. And we use, you know, the beauty, the beauty of this was we had the ARPA funds available that we could allocate toward this project. The problem would have been if these funds didn't exist, certainly we would have had to do some creative thinking in terms of where do we find these funds to do this? In the meantime, court services have to go on. They've got to have proper ventilation and air unit over there. But to the Commissioner's point, it's continued of the patchwork and we can't continue to do that. But wanted to point that out and, and we'll move on, but just wanted to make sure as we continue to move forward, we keep a, a running record of the dollars we're spending on a, a dinosaur that it's time for us as a board to make some decisions. If this time, Director Rutledge, I think it's time for public comment.
Yes, I don't have any public comment card. Did, did, do we have some?
Is Jay speaking?
I haven't seen her.
Okay, no, no public comment tonight.
No, okay.
Okay, none, none have come forward. Okay. All right, I'm going to move on, keep it moving. Commissioner to board comments.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening.
My first, of course, we are in Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is October and I was glad to see the, um, the Superior Court Award for the Domestic Violence Family Court, the grant that we just approved for $500,000. And when you read the requisition, that's for helping with enforcement of temporary protective orders and things like that. I used to volunteer for the DeKalb Volunteer Lawyers and I used to represent women who were victims of domestic violence and were trying to obtain a protective order. And I've had several women that had problems and one of my client's mother was killed because her protective order lapsed and he came to the house trying to kill her and ended up killing her mother. So it's very, very important that we do everything that we can to make sure that protective orders, when they are in place, they stay in place, that we do things. And I'm so glad to see this $500,000 grant because I'm, I do believe that that's going to help prevent things like that from happening in Rockdale County. Also, you know, we've said it a couple of times, this, with Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we want to remind people that it, that you need to love yourself enough to leave if you are in a situation where, where you are being abused either psychologically, financially, physically. Love yourself enough to leave and there are resources available to make sure that you aren't in that situation. With that being said, we do have the 21st, I believe, is when all of us are going to wear purple. I have to find some, but we're going, we're going, we're going to work it out.
You know, I've got plenty of purple.
Well, I know that the Chairman and Director Sanders have an abundance of purple.
I might be in your closet. But anyway, I'm, I'm looking forward to commemorating or at least wearing the purple to raise awareness of domestic violence because it's still a thing. It's, it's sad, but it's still very prevalent in, in today's society. Of course, it's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I would like to commend the ladies of the Kaita Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha for their breast cancer awareness. They still had a church service on last, this past Sunday, and I was able to give a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for their breast cancer awareness. And they had a, several testimonials that day of people who overcame breast cancer. And then we did a balloon release commemorating those that were, so came to their, their cancer. So that was really nice. And we did have our first small business mixer on the second Tuesday. It was very nice. And thank you, Commissioner Williams, for coming. Chairman, we know that you're indisposed, but we look forward to you being at the next one. We're going to have them the second Tuesday of every month, giving small businesses the opportunity to come together and mix and mingle. And on this, the next, it's going to be at the Reserve again from 6:00 to 9:00 or 6:00, whenever. We, I don't know when we left. We were having such a good time. But this month, in November, we will be commemorating or recognizing National Children's Day, which is November 20th. And I'm asking if you come or anybody that wants to bring a gently-used piece of luggage for National Children's Day. I will be collecting luggage for children that are in DFAS custody. A lot, oftentimes they have, when they leave, they don't have luggage. So they're going from place to place with trash bags and they pick up and leave again and they have trash bags. So I don't know where I got this idea, but my idea was to have
That's a good idea.
A luggage drive while we're, we're mixing and mingling. And so I'm off, I'm opening that up to if anybody would like to donate their luggage, you can bring it to the admin building and I'll get it. But we are going to do that for the, the children for National Children's Day. We, this month, we're also, well, this month and next month, we do have two vaccination opportunities. The Board of Commissioners, part of our ARPA funding, we are doing the incentive for your first shot. The shots are open to anyone ages 12 and up, but if you are a Rockdale County resident and you are getting your first shot, we are offering a $50 incentive for your first shot. Two opportunities. The first one is October 23rd. This is in conjunction with Congressman Hank Johnson. We will be at Helping Hands from 9:00 to 2:00. And I don't have that address, but the second one is November 6th. This is a community effort. We have numerous sponsors. We have Alpha Kappa Alpha, Delta Sigma Theta, Omega Psi Phi, Alpha Phi Alpha, the Latino Society, Kappa Alpha Psi, all of them, all of us are coming together to promote and to incent, raise awareness of the importance of the vaccination. So that will be on November 6th from 9:00 to 5:00 at the Board of Health. Let's see, finally, oh, November, not finally, got two things. November 4th is going to be, and we'll have the, the flyer by Tuesday, the, the how to obtain and maintain your business credit for your small businesses. That will be at Costly Mill at 6:00 on November 4th. And finally, our final summer concert series is October the 24th. Sunday is such a big day. I'm going to have to run through, wave, and then go on to the next thing, but I'm going to try to make it for a minute.
You have enough time for the lecture slide?
I, you know, I always make time to slide. Or wobble.
Commissioner Williams.
So I was, I really was interested in the A R C report. I always like hearing from them as I serve and have served for about six, seven years on the Community Resource Committee. They have such an abundance of data that translates into interest and policies that we can, and initiatives that we can do here in the county and, and where the needs are and that kind of thing. For instance, like his information tonight on workforce development. I, I just really enjoyed that presentation. I also wanted to highlight the Citizens Government Academy that had their graduation tonight. And I was super impressed that they went nine weeks in a row every Thursday night and and we have several of their graduates with us at this meeting, if you'd like to stand. Thank you. That, that nine weeks in a row, I mean, that's a whole quarter, a whole half of a semester, attending a night class. And that just, it was very impressive to me. So we appreciate your interest in the community and in the county and the government of the county and how that runs and all the different aspects of county government. So thank you so much.
We appreciate that our commissioners here, you guys did that for us.
Well, you're welcome.
And the first and foremost, we have to thank you guys for kicking it off. We just didn't show up over there.
Well, that's true. And we could go on to thank General Services and, and all the folks that made this happen. It was really, really a nice thing. Those are really all my comments. Oh, one more comment. Vaccinations. Let's just talk about that for a minute. If you are 65 and older, or if you have any kind of immunity issues, you can get a booster shot that they are now saying can make a big difference in keeping, keeping you out of the hospital or keeping you from dying. And it really came back around this week when General Kellen Powell passed away. And I, and I thought about it a lot because he'd had prostate cancer. Now he has multiple myeloma and, or had. And though he was fully vaccinated, his immune system was not strong enough to fight it. And I have a family member that's had prostate cancer that currently has multiple myeloma. And so, you know, I called him to say, make sure you get that booster shot. I think we cannot be too cautious. I, you know, when we go into stores, I'm still wearing my mask going out. Just need, not only are, do we need to be cautious for ourselves, but because even though many of us are fully vaccinated, we know we can still get the virus and spread it to those who are not vaccinated or those who are too young to be vaccinated or are, for one reason or another, aren't, are not able to be vaccinated. And so I'm glad that you really wanted to have this vaccination drive and the incentive for our citizens. I hope that that will make a difference and that people will come and get that, that shot.
Let me say that we only have 500 slots available for, well, we have 100 slots available for this Saturday and we only have 500 slots available for the 4th. So we are encouraging everybody to sign up because we can't open any more vaccines or anything. So we have very limited supplies.
And, and as I recall, there was a registration link.
Right, there's a registration link on the flyer and we're just asking, you know, people to, to sign up, especially since we are so limited in the amount of, in the capacity that we could serve.
All right. Well, I'll try to breeze right through my announcements. I will start where Commissioner Williams somewhat ended because enough can't be said about the importance of the fact that we are still in a pandemic. I think some people think it is over and it's done, but many of us are still getting calls from emails from family and friends and people we know who are still dying and passing away due to this terrible virus that has just crippled our nation. And that includes right here in Rockdale County. So I echo everything, all of the efforts, all of the initiatives and everything that's happening. I will also take a moment and talk about an American patriot and hero in that of General Colin Powell. Major loss for this country. Certainly hate to have seen him expire as a result of COVID. And although he had some other underlying health issues, all of us, no matter where you stand, remember General Colin Powell, Secretary of State Powell, as a true American leader and icon in so many ways. Executive Director Rutledge sent me a collage of some of his most famous quotes and sayings. And, and of course, he was truly a clear-minded and focused American. And, and, and one of the biggest things that stands out in my mind about General Powell, and there's so many things, but one of the biggest things was his strong posture when it came to national defense and national security. As a result of the 9/11 incident, if you all remember back then, after President Bush took to the airways, it was then General Colin Powell. And we all kind of took a sigh of relief because when he spoke, it was clear that we're going to be okay. But so he's certainly going to be missed. And I just wanted the commissioners to point out the tremendous work. And that's just a snippet when we know the work that this great American has done. Also wanted to highlight our citizens who participated in the Citizen Academy. We thank the General Services Department, Ms. Executive Director Sue Sanders, Ms. Landra. We thank the General Services Department, Ms. Executive Director Sue Sanders, Ms. Alandra Bean Bumpers, and Ms. Melissa Mims, who assisted with the Citizens Academy. This is a result of so many different kinds of inquiries here with the Board of Commissioners over a number of years to establish an educational-based program to teach the inner workings of Rockdale County government. All different county governments operate in a different kind of way. How we do things here in Rockdale County to execute the civic process on a day-to-day basis is very important. And I think Commissioners, as we prepare for next year's Citizen Academy, we're going to have a ton of people are going to be signing up and it's going to be somewhat of a lottery to determine who's actually going to be able to be sitting in those 20 seats for nine weeks, learning about every single department in Rockdale County and being exposed to what we do on a day-to-day basis. So big round of applause and thank you for all of those. Yes. John, Tommy, and Leslie are representing. They're here tonight. We've had throughout the nine weeks, we've had several members to attend our BOC meetings. Moving right along, this year, we've already kicked off our 13th Annual Senior Citizens Turkey Drive. And that's right, on November the 14th, over at the Olivia Haydale Senior Center, we will be giving out over 400 to 600 turkeys again this year. But I want to tell you, there is truly a turkey shortage this year. When we got ready, Director Gumm, to produce the promotional video, we wanted to use a turkey for a prop. Well, Ms. Mims says she went to three major grocery stores and there was not a turkey in sight. So turkeys will be coming, but there's a shortage of them. You all know that senior citizens are on a fixed income. And every year for the last 13 years, Tommy, you've been out there handing them out with us, they depend and they count on those turkeys because a lot of the seniors, for whatever different reasons, are stuck raising grandchildren. So it makes a big difference. The most expensive part of that meal is that bird. So this year, there's a shortage of turkeys. If you can find it in the goodness of your heart, when you go to purchase one for your family, if you can afford to pick up an extra turkey, we ask that you take it to 1636 Dogwood Drive to Courtesey Ford, which is our official drop-off location. And on the 14th of November at the Olivia Haydale Senior Citizens, both of the Commissioners have been a part of this distribution in years past, will be distributing those again at 3:00 PM on that Sunday before Thanksgiving. So just want to remind everybody, there's a shortage. If you can afford to grab two, go ahead and grab two and then drop one off at Courtesey Ford so we can be a blessing throughout this holiday season. I just want to say thank you to the staff and to my colleagues for holding down the fort as I unplugged for a little while and rebooted and refreshed, Commissioner, as you would say. And it was really good for the mind, the body, and the soul to come back and do the people's business. But I certainly do appreciate the fine work of Chief Cade and all of our executive directors and leadership team who kept the county moving and doing what we needed to do. Again, thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for all of the things that you do to help move this county forward. As stated during the ARC presentation, we remain optimistic that Rockdale County is still the best county in the state of Georgia. We call for a public comment. I looked right at you, but come on, you have, you have, you missed the opportunity, but I'm going to afford it to you. Come on up here.
No, you just said something that made me want to make a public comment.
Oh, okay.
You were talking about the turkey.
Yes, ma'am. Well, go ahead and give us your name since you're there and we're going to.
I'm sorry, I'm Callis Turner.
That's okay, go right ahead.
You mentioned about the turkeys and what I want to know, is there something, somewhere I can find that, where I can post it on Voices for Rockdale?
So we have the flyer posted on our website on Rockdale Channel 23 and on the county website. And it has already been splattered all over social media, including Facebook. But I would encourage you to get with Director Gumm and he will, he can email you the actual flyer if you can share it. We would appreciate any help and support you can get with that.
And I'm going to put something on there about the ARC. They're going to send me something, email, because a lot of people are looking for work. But I just want to throw this out so you all can get prepared for next year. Goldman Sachs says that the housing are going to increase another 16%. So we're talking about milit rates. So you were talking about finding money. If you can find some money that you all can help us out next year, maybe you can start thinking about it now. That's why I wanted to mention it.
Well, Ms. Turner, I'm so glad you mentioned this. I want to throw this at you. Make sure you get a hold of your state senator, your state representatives, and your US senators and your US representatives, your congresspeople who represent this district. Because it's not just this board alone, because when you talk about federal funding, those people have to play a part in making that happen. We have Executive Director Rutledge, who's our Legislative Affairs Director, but the bug doesn't stop here. We can start it and we support you with that because we need all of the, you listened to the presentation of ARC, they rely heavily on federal funding. And they talked about the different initiatives that's coming out of this administration in DC right now. But we know things could change. We need citizen involvement. That's a little bit of what we were talking about with the Citizen Academy, absolutely. And I think you ought to be, I think you're a prime candidate for next year's Citizen Academy, too.
You have to say the lottery.
You look good in one of those gold, yellow, yellow gold shirts.
But you said lottery, so my name is kind of getting known, so I might not get picked.
No, you, we'll get you in there. Just make sure you go ahead and sign up now.
Okay, so I'll get in there and then I get the free ambulance service, too. You all heard us say that, right?
Now, see, there you are. We'll get you in there so you won't be putting out the wrong information because Chief Mack does one of those presentations during those nine weeks and she'll be reminding you that it's not free. Well, we certainly do appreciate Ms. Turner and her citizen involvement. She may not have participated in the inaugural class, but she's an active resident here in Rockdale County. And we do appreciate you and certainly welcome your help with the Turkey Drive going forward. Ladies and gentlemen, this board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.